I haven't quite worked up.
Done.
How much should we say?
Four.
Travel.
Oh, I wasn't looking, I'm sorry. It feels like it's very close.
Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Teresa.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel. Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Balk.
Here.
Okay, item three is the consent agenda. A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of March 7, 2022. Item B, licenses, approve extension of outdoor service for 513 for events on June 11, 2022, and July 16, 2022, subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. Item C is a motion for acceptance of the 2016 sanitary sewer extension projects, Elk Run First Edition Sewer, Northwest Iowa Soccer Complex Sewer Extension, and Box Park Edition Sewer Extension from developers, make them part of the public sanitary sewer system. Item D is a resolution setting a hearing and directing publication of notice on proposed text amendments to Title IX, Chapter Five of the Spencer Zoning Code to provide for upper-story residential uses of single-family duplex residential and multifamily residential as permitted uses in the CBD Central Business Zoning District as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, public hearing scheduled for April 4, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Item E is a resolution setting a hearing and directing publication of notice on a proposed text amendment to Title IX, Chapter Five, Section Four of the Spencer Zoning Code to clarify exterior wall requirements in the CBD Central Business Zoning District as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, public hearing scheduled for April 4, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Item F is a motion to approve quotes for the transfer station tipping floor project. This is a CIP project as follows. 4B, construction for the lining, $76,444. Pixler Electric for the electrical, $19,861. Hanson Plumbing and Heating for the plumbing and heating at $7,050 for a total of $103,355. Item G is to approve residential tax abatement application for Jill D. Little, 903 Sixth Avenue Southwest, subject to review by the Clay County Assessor. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Lauren and seconded by Ron, any discussion?
Yeah, could I get Mark White to step forward, please? I got a couple of questions on this.
Certainly, good evening.
Good evening, Mark. The acceptance of the 2016, what, why did we wait so long for the acceptance? Or was there, was there a reason behind that?
No, it's just some housecleaning, housekeeping work to keep up on. So, we had bunched some of them together and a couple of them, excuse me, had gotten away from us that needed to be followed up through a development, and we're just trying to catch up and clean house.
Okay, and then on the transfer station, the budgeting and stuff, I know we had it in the CIP for around $80,000 originally. Where is the funding on the rest of that going to come being it is in the budget?
That's a good question. The project itself will all come from the solid waste reserve. So it just takes a little more out of the reserve. So, we're kind of in that time. It did come in about $20,000 over the anticipated budget due to unstable times and inflation. Most of it was directly related to steel costs. So when we, we sequence these capital improvement plans, sometimes in the sequence when they're done early on a deal like this, it's an estimate at that point.
Yeah, I was surprised the electrical came in pretty close. I was figuring the high cost on that was going to be a little higher too, but I.
I was too.
But I understand the material costs going up there, so thanks for the clarification.
You bet, glad to, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item four, we have three public hearings. A is a public hearing on proposed City of Spencer Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2027. I declare the public hearing now open. And before we go to any written or oral comments, like Brian, would, would you like to comment on the capital improvement plan?
Sure, I can.
Okay, just, and, and what I would like, I'm sorry, what, what I'd like is just for you to explain to the public what the capital improvement plan is and, and how it's funded and that sort of thing, and how we came about this.
So our five-year CIP, our capital improvement plan, is a roadmap for all the projects or equipment purchases, major ones that we look to do over the next five years. Funding for it is typically out of departmental reserves, bonding, grants are some of the major funding sources. So what happens is in the spring or fall of every year, departments put together, they review the list that they have already submitted, they'll review those projects, look to add any. We review them, and then this year in late January, no, late January, early February, we presented all those projects to the council. They're broken out by fiscal year. Overall, the plan for the five years is a total of just over $21.5 million, and that includes any in street improvements. Like I said, equipment purchases and that are the main bulk of that. For fiscal year 23, which is the only part of it is, so after we present it to the council, you know, none of it's set in stone until the council actually approves either going out for doing the project, purchasing the equipment and that. But fiscal year 23 is, is pretty well set in that, and so that's what will be included in the budget to follow, 24 through 27 get reviewed each year. So for 23, we're looking at an addition of projects and equipment of just over $5 million in that, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. I, I didn't mean to throw you under the bus there.
I meant to print it off just in case.
You did a great job, okay, thank you. And, and those capital improvement committee hearings were all open to the public as well?
Yes.
Okay, are there any written comments against?
We have none, Mayor.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. I would entertain a motion to approve the City of Spencer Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2023 to fiscal year 2027. Motion made by Bill. Seconded by Tracy. All in favor, please, or is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, Tom. Motion carries. Item 4B is a public hearing on proposed City of Spencer fiscal year 2022-2023 budget for the City of Spencer. I declare the public hearing now open. Now, before we go to any written or oral comments, I think we have a short slide presentation on the budget by Finance Director Brian Weave.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so for, before you is consideration of the fiscal 22 fiscal year 23 budget. It'll begin July 1 of '22 and end June 30 of '23. This is kind of the culmination of about four months of work. We start in the late fall, December time period of departments submitting their requests for budgetary, for operations for the next fiscal year. We work on those through January and that, and then in late February, early March, we hold, we held several, two count, or two meetings with our finance committee that spent a lot of time going in-depth over the, all the, the budget, and then we presented their recommendation to the, the committee, the full council about a week after that. And then so, at our last meeting, the council held a public hearing on what was termed as the maximum tax levy, which is a component of the final tax levy, doesn't include all of the levies that we issue, but does include the majority of them. And then tonight is the public hearing on the budget itself. So just a little bit of, in brief, sure I clicked the right thing. So the overall budget for revenue is just over 21, $24.1 million, and these numbers are net transfers. So the certified budget will be a little larger, but that includes transfers that we make inter-funds, so they're not necessarily considered revenue. We're just moving money from one fund to another to fund priorities like capital projects, things like that. But of, of that, 35% of this budget is coming from property taxes. 32% of it is charges for service, that includes solid waste bills, sewer bills, things like that, anything we have charged a service for. 14% of it is intergovernmental, meaning it's coming either from the federal, state, county, or other local government entities such as a school or SMU. And then 11% of is other city taxes, and that could be like hotel motel, local option sales tax, franchise fees, things like that. So that's the main sources of revenue for the budget. Expenditures, we're at $24.8 million. You will see the budget is, or has additional expenditures and revenue. The bulk of that comes from paying for capital projects of which we utilize reserves, so we are going to draw down some of our reserve balance in fiscal year 23 as we construct projects or buy equipment. But that's what we save those monies for, is for these type of projects. 26% of the budget is salaries and wages, 19% of it is contractual services, 20% is also then capital outlay, and you'll see the remaining of it, how it's broken out by there to make up the $24.8 million. When we look at it, as we've talked about, property taxes are our biggest, one of the largest source of revenue, and that goes off by value of the property that, within the, the city. It's all divvied out by class, and so residential is our largest valued class when we look at 100% value, and when we say 100% value, that is the value that the county assessor places on the property. And that residential property in Spencer is just over $606 million, or 68% of our value. Our next largest sector is commercial at $217 million, or 24% of our value. When it comes to determining property taxes, there's a state mechanism known as the rollback, so it, especially on residential, you do not pay taxes on that 100% value. You pay it on a rolled back value, and for fiscal year 23, that's 54, just over 54% of residential value is what you're actually paying taxes on. Commercial industrial pay taxes on 90% of their assessed value. So when we look at that, that $606 million of residential goes down to $328 million. So these are the values that we are computing the final tax levy on, is these values here. Then 34% is now commercial value at $195 million, et cetera. When we talk about that rollback, this is what it is done over the last few years. Orange is the commercial industrial rollback that is set by state statute at a 90%. So you'll look at a commercial value and take 90% of it, that's what is taxable. The gray line is what is termed as multi-residential. That is any property that is four units or greater, so it includes apartment complexes, assisted living, nursing homes, any type of that is considered multi-residential. As you can see, the taxing ability on those properties is waning, and then next year will be the last year it has, and then it will follow the residential rollback, which is that blue line. You see the blue line, it does go up and down each year, so every year the state redoes their formula, and so we'll go up maybe 2%, back 2%, et cetera. And so a lot of the times when you might see your tax bill, a lot of it is, you know, the rates themselves may not have changed, but it's that rollback figure that's taking value or lessening value of what is actually taxable. So if you have a $100,000 house, last year is taxes is $56,000. This year it says if it's $54,000, and so that shifting rollback is a lot of times of what, why your tax bill may go up or down. The other component is obviously the rates that are set by the city, the county, the school. All those rates get combined and put into there. And so, and then also the third factor is what the county assessor actually does for your value of your house. That is independent of what the city does, we don't have any control over how much value the assessor says your house is worth. They are to be between 95 and 100% of actual market value, and so that's their goal when they do it. So when we look at our tax rate between fiscal year 22, which is the current fiscal year, and the, the rate for 23, you'll see it as a 55 cent increase. These are the levies that we utilize. The main difference is, is the increase, or 49% of that is on the FICA and IFRS levy for employee benefits. Police and fire pension, that rate and contribution rate changes annually. So it went down 2 and a, 2 and 1/3%, and so we'll actually levy a little bit less this year for that. Other employee benefits are essentially the city's component of health insurance, work comp insurance, unemployment, things like that, 10 cents. And so, it's a, and a percent-wise, it's a 4.3% increase in the overall levy. So how does that impact people and residents? So if you take your normal about houses, 100% value of $100,000, you'll see that rollback was 56.4% in fiscal year 22, for fiscal year 23, it's 54.13%. The estimated taxes, and these are the city's component of those, and again, we're assuming, you know, we don't, since we don't have control over what the assessor does, we're assuming that value has not changed there. You would, estimated city taxes in the current year would be about $707. Fiscal year 23 is $708.43, so a, a annual change of $1.24, 10 cents per month for that, with this, even though the rate went up 55 cents, the impact is almost negligible on a home. $200,000, you'll see an increase of $2.53 over the year, 21 cents a month. $300,000 home is $3.80 for the entire year, or 32 cents a month with this budget. On the commercial side, since our rollback does not change, their, the amount that commercial business pays is directly, are related to what our levy rate is, and so those numbers vary a little bit different or wider than on the residential side. Business at $150,000 would see a $74 increase in their taxes, or $6.20 per month. $300,000 is approximately $12, or $148 increase over the year. And a $500,000 business is about a $248 increase. So the overall expense drivers going in here, obviously wages, as we all deal with trying to find employment or employees as we go into our part-time and summer seasonal wages. We are, look, we are, the budget does contemplate boosting those to $15 across the board, which adds about $60,000 increase to the budget. The other part is, out of our approximately 85, 86 full-time employees, 55 of those are eligible for a step increase on our pay plan. That adds about $158,000 to the budget. And then as, as we all know, inflationary pressures that we're experiencing, as you saw in the consent agenda, you know, larger increase for materials and that. So what we did is we kind of looked at a year-over-year cost comparison. So for a snow plow, for us, back in January of '21, I average, snow plow will take 80 gallons of fuel, diesel. In January of '21, it would have cost us about $141 to fill that truck. January of '22, $212 per time, and they're not the most fuel-efficient vehicles as we go plowing. Squad car, $40 last January, this January, $58. And then heating costs, these are the estimated for this building. Last January would have cost us about $263. This January, that same amount, if we would have used that same amount of heat, thermes would have been about $400. So, you know, the costs we're paying, just like everyone else has recognized, we're seeing those same cost increases as well. Where do we rank statewide? You'll see where our ranking out of, so there's 941 cities within the state of Iowa. Current fiscal year, we are 413th out of those 931. Assuming no other city changes their tax rate, which isn't going to happen, but we won't know where people fill or fall till after the end of this month. We would, with our rate, we go to 365th. If we look at the top 100 cities by population of which we're in, currently we're 75th. This budget would put us at 73rd. Cities with 10,000 population, there's 38 cities statewide, we were 26th. This one, this budget would keep us at, right about there at 25th. Cities between 98 and 15,000, there's 14 of them, we'd be ninth. And then just those within the Iowa Lakes Corridor counties, so the counties of Buena Vista, Clay, Emmett, and Dickinson. There are 36 cities, we'd stay about the same. And then when we look at just the tax revenue-supported funds, so that's going to be essentially our general, our general fund, debt service, employee benefits, and that, we're talking about $9.7 million worth of revenue. 73% of that is derived from property taxes, 12% is intergovernmental, and then charges for service. And then on the expense side, we have $9.9 million. Bulk of that, 55% of it is salaries and wages, followed by repairs, maintenance, and utilities, and then contractual services at 12%. So. And the final one? So, every dollar that a citizen pays or a business pays in taxes, where do we, where does it go? 34, 34 cents of every dollar goes for public safety, that is the police, fire, and buildings, building departments. 29% or 29 cents is employee benefits. Culture and Recreation Program, which is the library, parks, cemetery, and that is 20 cents. General Government is eight. Debt service, which is the amount we pay interest and principal on bonds, is 8 cents, and then liability insurance is 2 cents of every dollar. Now I'm done.
Okay. That, that was great, that was great, great slides, great slides. So, we, we may have some questions for you after the public hearing announcements, but for right now, are there any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I now declare the public hearing now closed. Item 4B1 is a resolution adopting the City of Spencer annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Motion made by Bill. Seconded by Lauren. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Only comment I would make, if, if Brian can go back to that slide, it's important for the, for the public to understand that that $8.10 cannot change.
Yes.
That's the max. We, that's all we can do. So other, we got other sources that we have to get revenue from. The only other comment I, I may want to make is to thank the staff, Brian, the finance committee for putting this together. This is not an easy task. This is literally hundreds of hours of time of city staff and Brian and the finance committee, finance staff putting this together. And compared to what it was when I started doing this a long time ago, this is a piece of cake.
Yes.
So those are my comments.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I would like to basically reiterate what, what Bill just said. I want to thank Bill as the finance chair, and Lauren, and Brian on the finance committee, and all of the council members for the time and effort that they put into it. But I'd also like to, to thank the staff and Brian as finance director, Dan as city manager, for spending the time to put this budget together. As Bill said, it is not an easy task, and I, I think that no one wanted to see any kind of increase, but we wanted to maintain city services for all of the citizens of Spencer. And what we came up with was as good as we believe we, we could do. I also want to make a comment about the transparency of the process. I was at Eggs and Issues on Saturday, and there were some comments by the legislators with regard to transparency of property taxes and, and the entire process. And I think as Brian alluded to, this process that we went through is very, very transparent for the public. The committee meetings that, that we had on the finance committee, on the committee of the whole, and so forth, were all open to the public. The press was there covering these, these meetings. So there is transparency. Nothing is done in the dark of night that, that we've done here. It's, it's all been out in the open. So with that, any other discussion? Any other comments? And I think we have a, do we have a?
First and a second?
First and a second?
Yes, we do.
Yep, we do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, with that, please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Nelson?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Item 4C is a public hearing on submittal of community development block grant application for the City of Spencer, Iowa, 2023 East Side Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project. I now declare the public hearing open, and we have some comments that need to be read into the record by Darren Baumgartner from Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission. Darren?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a requirement of a public hearing.
This is a requirement of a public hearing for the submittal of the CDPG application. And I've got some items or comments to read into the text of the amendments here, items that need to be discussed at minimum for this application. So please bear with me. To comply with citizen participation requirements pursuant to requirements of the section five oh eight of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen eighty-seven, as amended, this public hearing is being held by the City Council of Spencer, Iowa for the purposes to discuss the submittal of a community development block grant CDPG application for the City of Spencer, two thousand and twenty-three East Side Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project. The need for this project is due to the City of Spencer in two thousand and nine entering, entering, entering into a consent order with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for elimination of CSOs, that be combined sewer overflows, by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. In two thousand and seventeen, the consent order was amended to reflect an updated long-term control plan, which states that the City of Spencer will continue the separation of remaining combined sewers. Additionally, this proposed project will help prevent raw untreated sewage from being discharged into Little Sioux River and will also help to eliminate the frequency of street flooding, ponding of combined sewage onto the streets and backup, backup into basements during wet weather events. Sewer backup and street flooding, ponding have the potential to cause property damage and human exposure to the raw sewage. Also, the city has facilities to pump combined sewers and storm water to the wastewater treatment plant. Treatment of the waste water results in increased operational cost, or excuse me, treatment of the storm water. The proposed project is generally located in a drainage area within the City of Spencer between Chicago Eastern, excuse me, Chicago and Eastern Railroad to the north, East Third Street to the south, and Tenth Avenue to the east, and Fourth Avenue to the west. Primary construction activities to address the need for this project and to help bring the city into EPA compliance will consist of the replacement of an estimated thirty-eight hundred twenty-three linear feet of twelve-inch to thirty-six-inch stormwater pipe, seventeen hundred linear feet of eight-inch sanitary sewer pipe, reconnect thirty, sixty-six sewer services, eighty-eight sanitary sewer manholes and inlet and removal and replacement, and eighty-eight hundred, excuse me, eight thousand eight hundred square feet or square yards of payment removal and restoration. It's anticipated the project will help the city meet the goal of elimination of CSOs, reduce the frequency of sewer backups and street ponding, flooding within the project area, and to reduce operational costs to treat sanitary wastewater. The CDPG application will be submitted to, honored before April first, two thousand and twenty-two to the Iowa Economic Development Authority requesting federal funds in an amount of six hundred thousand. The estimated cost, not, not including engineering fees, of the proposed CDPG project is one million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. The sources of funding for the proposed project are seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred in capital improvement funds, four hundred and fifty-three thousand in Iowa DOT swap funds to pay for a portion of East Forest Street reconstruction, and six hundred thousand in CDPG funds. The estimated portion of federal funds to benefit low to moderate income persons is fifty-two point five percent or three hundred and fifteen thousand. Due to the nature of this project, no persons or businesses shall be displaced as a result of the recommended project. In the event that any persons or businesses are displaced as a result of the recommended project, entities involved in the project will adhere to the requirements of the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Darren? Okay. Thank you very much, Darren.
Thank you.
So with that, any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I now declare the public hearing now closed. Item four B one is a resolution adopt, or I'm sorry, is, is a motion approving the community development and housing needs ass, whoop, yeah, assessment, included with the CDPG application.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron. Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
Aye.
Motion carries. C two is a resolution authorizing the submission of the CDPG application for two thousand and twenty-three East Side Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project.
I'll make a motion on that, too.
Motion made by Ron. Seconded by Tracy. Any discussion?
I'd just like to tell that we've been pretty successful on these grants and, and, and everything that we get out of these grants does help the homeowners in those areas and it helps the city on the funding and stuff. So hopefully we'll be successful again and, and move this project forward.
Anyone else? Please vote by machine.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolutions approved. Item five under new business is a resolution authorizing and confirming the grant application submission and local funding match for the Eighteenth Street Trail Extension Project and dedicating the trail to public use and maintenance. Motion made by Bill. Seconded by Lauren. Any discussion?
I hate to ask Jared to step up. I, I know this. But, but, but I do have some concerns. I see that it's going to run, is, is it going to run on the side of the golf course? On, on the driving range side? And, and that was kind of a concern.
Yeah, so it'd just be an extension from the current Eighteenth Street project all the way to Country Club Lane, so it would run along the driving range. We've had discussions with the golf course about putting potential netting system up there to protect those users on that trail. So we've had discussions with the golf course and they're comfortable with, with supporting the project and.
Okay. That was, that was my concern there.
Okay. No, that, that's legitimate concern, I think.
You're making the assumption somebody slices your hook.
Yeah. I'm assuming somebody will. And I'm pretty confident.
Yeah. And if you look at the other side of the, the road, you know. Yeah. That's for sure. Any other questions for Jared? Thank you, Jared. And, yeah. Just take your time. I think we're good. Yeah. Take your time. Okay. Okay. Please vote by machine.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolutions approved. Item five B is a motion to approve change order number four for wastewater treatment plan improvements, phase two, for two thousand and twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents from the contingency allowance.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Ron.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lauren. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Item five C is a motion to approve renewal of property and liability insurance policy with Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, ICAP, for two thou, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Motion made by Lauren. Seconded by Bill. Or was it Tracy? Okay. Any discussion?
I hate to go into, how much of an increase is this, Brian? Because I'm, and kind of just for the citizens, it sounds like a large amount, you know? So, so I think it probably to the citizens, we're paying two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We should probably know why.
Um, it's a thirty-four thousand dollar increase over the current year. The bulk of it's coming from the property and the, that side of it and the general liability. The property, as you know, the state has been hit by several natural disasters over the last two years, two derechoes over two years. That's wreaking havoc on the property rates across the state. And so with ours, we're a pool of, I want to say there's three hundred and some cities and counties that are part of this pool. Um, I know several of those entities got direct hits from that. So obviously that's doing that. And then just general liability is going up, or the two main areas of our policy. But some, some on the vehicle side and some on the property, again, on the property, because we, we increase the value of what we're covering, which is going to drive up the rates as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Item five D is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson, P.C., for two thousand and twenty-three NPRL intermediate cover project at the landfill.
I'll give a first.
Okay. First by Ron.
I'll second, Mayor.
Seconded by Lauren. Any discussion?
We got an engineer's report coming up, so we'll, we'll leave it there.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion, motion carries. Okay. Item six is the engineer's report. Brian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Brian Schmidt with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson. Just got a few things to update you on. Corey Jergens Construction is working on Drainage District Number Forty-seven ditch cleaning project. And that's the, well, it really wasn't much of a ditch before, but it runs north of Eleventh Street Southwest, west of the Menards Development. Once he gets that finished, depending on the weather this week, he'll start working on the intake replacement project. And that was a project from last year that got carried over till this year. City will be accepting bids on the two thousand and twenty-two Fairway Tennis Court Replacement Project. And that's on April eighth. Spencer Municipal Utilities will also be taking bids on April eighth for a water main replacement project. As part of that project, we're going to do a little storm sewer extension on Fourteenth Avenue West. And then regarding the landfill, basically, that's Mark's wheelhouse, but they, DNR is requiring to do some intermediate cover in areas of the landfill where there's no active filling taking place, just mainly to meet their guidelines. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Yeah. Question, Twenty-Fifth Street Southwest. And, and I know we've been talking about that. Have we've got the, the preliminary things set up and sent out to the, to the, that area? Or have we, or do we have to bring that back to a committee report, meeting and take it, start with that?
Yeah. Very good question. We have roughed out an assessment schedule, but we do want to review that at a committee meeting because it's not just a straightforward project.
Correct.
So we want to get input from, from the committee.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay. Thank you very much. Item seven, city manager's report. Dan?
Got a couple of things. Same as I did last week. I've got a couple, I've got a couple diplomas, if you will, from the NIMs training. I still need some more. We're doing some emergency planning right now. We had a meeting today, trying to get us up to speed on that with the, some of our new people and me being one of them and Mayor being another, that we're, make sure we're all up to snuff in case we would happen to get a disaster. So we need to, we need to get all electeds all up to speed on that as soon as possible. Time we get a disaster, it'll be too late. So we need to get that done. Secondly, last week I was in Iowa City for some training. Some, learned some pretty good stuff, other than taking about a two-hour break to watch a bad basketball game on Thursday. Pretty good training, so brought a lot back and it was a, it was a pretty good experience. And like all of those things, you learn the most from talking to your colleagues from other places on what they're doing. So it was very good, it was very good and well worth my time.
Okay. Any questions for Dan?
Dan, what, set up a meeting on that Twenty-Fifth Street, Street, a committee meeting? What, what are you thinking?
Well, let's, we do a little meeting thing coming up down here under number nine. Let's talk about it then.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else for Dan? Okay. Under item eight, the mayor's report, just a couple of things. First of all, I think that, I've talked to several members of the council with regard to the Senior Activities Center, and I've gotten some calls with regard to the Senior Activities Center. And it came to our attention during the budgeting process that the Senior Activities Center did not request funding as they have in years past. And so then, in the last few weeks, it's, it's come out that there's the potential that the Senior Activities Center will be closing on June thirtieth or thereabouts. And we're going to have some people at the end of the meeting that would like to talk about that. But I've talked to city staff and I've talked to several of the council members with regard to the, the city's funding. If there is the potential for getting the center to stay open, that we would fund them at their last year's requested amount. I would advocate for that. Now, that doesn't, you know, I can't do that myself. That would take council approval and it would also take amending the budget in order to do that. But that said, I think that the senior center is an, a very, very important part of our community. I hope that it can stay open. Maybe it has to be rebranded. Maybe it has to have some sort of change in the mission. I'm not sure. But I will work with anyone who wants to try and keep it open so that we can keep it open. I think it serves a, a good function for a segment of our population. Second thing that I'd like to bring up, you're going to hear more about this, but I've talked about this at department head meetings, just mentioned it casually, and I'd like to mention it to the public at large. Spring is upon us. I think yesterday was the first day of spring. And it was a beautiful day. I was out on a very long bike ride. And I noticed along the trails and in the ditches and things like that, we've got a lot of trash. A lot of trash. And what I would like to initiate toward the end of April is a spring community cleanup. And I'm going to be asking the schools and service clubs and churches and anybody who would like to get involved in, in cleaning up their neighborhoods, cleaning up the trails and things like that, to contact the city in, in any way that they can help. And we'll be getting more details out on how people can become involved in that. Third thing is, that I'd like to mention is the sidewalk program. Now, several years ago, we initiated, the city initiated a sidewalk program, a sidewalk repair program. So we, people who have sidewalks that are in disrepair can replace their sidewalks with city funding. The city will take care of the cost of the concrete and then, but the, the citizens are responsible for the labor. And it requires that someone come down and fill out an application, I think in the city clerk's office, correct, Teresa? And we do have money available. But I mention it now because the contractors are getting busy. And if, if you want to take part in that, if you would like your, to repair your, your sidewalk so that pedestrians can walk safely, and I think getting out in our community and walking is an outstanding activity. And we want to have safe sidewalks for everybody as well as trails. So if you would like to do that, please contact City Hall. And then lastly, I'd just like to mention what's going on in Ukraine. I mentioned this in the. I mentioned this in the February, I believe it was the February mayor's update. The Russian invasion of Ukraine had just started at that point. It's still going on. We're seeing a travesty, a loss of human life and so forth. And I'd just like you to keep the Ukrainian people in your thoughts and prayers. And that's all I have, under the mayor's report. Item nine, council and committee reports. Dan?
So we have our, our next council meeting on April 4th. I have a note to do two committee of the holes, one on April 4th and one on April 11th. I, one of those is about bonding capacity. I don't really know what the other one's about.
The 11th was going to be on our bond and long-term schedule of, that we've been talking about for the projects. April 4th, I believe, we were going to talk about 25th Street Sewer. Before the council meeting.
Okay, so we, that was.
Twenty fifth.
On the 25th.
Yeah. On the 4th and 5:30, we were going to talk about the sewer project, and then the 11th was long-term financing options and stuff, so.
All right. All right, so we're good then? I mean, we are good.
I think we're good. Okay. Anything else? That's it?
Nope.
Okay. Item 10 is a motion to approve bills and claims. Okay. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second him.
Seconded by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Okay. Item 11, other business and opportunity to, to address the council. And as I stated before, I believe we have some people in the audience tonight who would like to speak about the Senior Activities Center. And what I would like, those of you who are going to speak, come to the mic, state your name, address, and try and limit your comments to two or three minutes. But if you go a little longer and you have something beneficial to say, we'll, we'll be okay with that. But do remember that there is a gavel up here, okay? So, okay. So Mike Monroe, I think Mike has something that he'd like to talk about.
Good evening. My name is Mike Monroe. I live at 309 East 9th Street. And I would like to speak about Spencer Area Activity Center closing. When we became aware that the Spencer Activity Center was closing, we thought it was necessary for the public to be informed. I want to thank the SAC Board of Directors, which I think most of them are here tonight, for their work at the center, their staff and the volunteers over the years that have taken part in, in the senior center, as we used to call it. The Spencer City Council, the Clay County Board of Supervisors and their staffs and many others that have participated in doing funding and grants and so forth like that over the years. As I understand, the final date for any reorganization will be April 15th. And the board, they'll speak more to that, but they had to set some type of a date to go forward with the closing. I have visited with the SAC Board members, several of them, some board member, or some city council members, some on the Clay County Board of Supervisors, and others in the community to discuss if any organizations would be willing to manage the center and keep it operational. So that's something that we need to think about. Our citizens need a center to be active in. With the COVID closings and the pressure in the world as it is today, it's necessary to keep folks physically and emotionally healthy. And I just want to thank everybody that's participated, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mike. I'm Curtis Brownmiller, 17 and a half, West Fourth Street. I'm also one of the downtown property owners. But my major concern with closing the center, as Mike mentioned, most of the seniors need someplace to be able to socialize. A lot of them are isolated in their homes for many hours a day, and if they don't have a place to come out to, that they feel comfortable, they don't. That can lead to long-term depression and other serious concerns that affect all of us, not just the seniors. It affects their children, grandchildren, and everything. So I'm hoping, as Mike had mentioned, that there is a way that some organization or groups of organizations can come together to help define the funding and potential staffing necessary to keep the center or a facsimile of the center, operational, going long into the future. I know that many of you know me, know my name because of my parents and my sisters. But every time I came back to visit my parents over the years when they were still able to, we would always spend at least one or two afternoons out at the center, when it was at the North Mall, for the dinner date program, which was a huge success at that time. I know there have been many sad things that have happened over the years to cause things to change. In the last two years, the COVID shutdown really put a kibosh on just about everything that seniors do. Now we're just about ready to start, people are getting comfortable, starting to come open, and here we are shutting down. I feel sad about that, and unfortunately, without the help of the city and other organizations, there's nothing that can be done to change that. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Fitzgerald. Live at 111 East 21st Street. And I'm a strong supporter of this senior center and their every day. Volunteer three days a week. And there's been some, some information in the news media that I don't like to hear it. And about a week ago, it appeared in there that we have from 30 to 40 people a week. And we have, most days, we have that many a day. So that was false information. And I would like to pass out our financial report to each of you. Go through it whenever you have time and, and I appreciate what you folks can do for us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Okay. Anyone else? Scott?
Council Mayor. My name is Scott Tenclay. I live at 15 West, 1512 West 12th Street here in Spencer. I'm on the board. I'm the president of the board, as have the last two folks have been. Just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a financial update. I think that's completely fair at this point, so you could sort of know right where we're standing from a financial end of things. And before we do, I'd just like to make a couple, three points. First of all, this is not a matter of who is for or against the center. Every person on the board is for the center. Most of the community, probably all the community is for the center. This is not a matter of for or against. The challenges we're facing today, the second point, began long before any of the board or director that are currently serving were on the board or was the director. And I think I can speak for all of us in saying that the entire board is in favor of continuing operations, provided a viable solution can be found by our April 15th deadline. To update the council and, and those interested on our financial status and how the process worked, in January, the board unanimously voted to close the center based on the financial and attendance issues that we were seeing. We voted at the time to close March 31st and then later amended that to close June 30th. Financially, right now, we have about $90,000 cash on hand. That's separate from any assets that we have. However, $50,000 of that 90 is a gift provided to the center from a family that used to attend that was specifically earmarked for the center to use when viable and when, when it's, when it's viable. And so we have earmarked it as such as well. And at this point, until a viable idea comes up, we will not be touching that. And the family has reaffirmed that on several occasions here lately. We're losing right now between $2,000 and $3,000 a month. That varies depending on the heat bill, cooling bill, and those types of things. We have, during COVID, turned the heat down or air conditioning up. It does make really no difference. Our utility bill alone at the center is $12,000 to $14,000 a year, and that's a, a huge, huge part of our budget. Our director, Cindy Jones, is retiring at the end of June, at the end of our fiscal year, which means that we will need to hire a new director. Cindy makes well less than she should, and hiring a new person would be probably a 30 or so thousand-dollar increase over what we're paying Cindy. We also would look to hire a janitorial staff who previous board terminated. So all in all, we're looking at new payroll starting July 1st of somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000 in new payroll, which would also present new losses that we're not facing right now. Some quick math I just did about a week or so ago. With the cash we'll have on hand at the end of June, combined with the losses we expect to sustain, we're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of six to eight months of operations before we're totally, totally out of money. With us being in a condo situation with community housing and the Spencer schools and the facility we're in, we cannot turn off the water because it will impact the fire suppression system in that building. We cannot turn off the electric because it will impact the security system. And obviously, we cannot turn off the heat, or that also impacts fire suppression. So my thinking, and it's hard to know for sure, should the plans to close continue, we need to close with the balance on the checkbook so that we can pay those things and be responsible people for our neighbors. If no solution is found by the 15th, or if the board views that there is no viable solution, the center will close. Some future updates if I can, real quickly. If a solution is found, a new board will be seated and a new director will be hired and things will continue, hopefully in a better light than they have been lately. If no, if no viable option is found, the building will be auctioned off and our assets will be sold. That, those proceeds and the proceeds of the gift that we've been given, we will do an application process of some sort and divvy those proceeds out to nonprofits in the community. So even though there's something not good coming out of this, if we do indeed have to close, at least we can use the proceeds to do something good as well. So we, the board has made that provision as well. So that's all I have. Any questions of me or?
Anyone have any questions of any of the speakers?
This is incredibly tough situation, and all of us, I know, hope that a solution can be found. We're dealing with what we have right in front of us, not hypotheticals, so.
And I understand this has been going on, because I've been on the council and I think Steve, it, it, it's just been a steady decrease and I, and I know COVID, you know, without, without the membership, but, you know, then it looks bad when you, when you don't have the numbers there, because then, then people see, well, it's not being used. Well, there was a serious reason why. No, it's too bad there wouldn't have been some funding in the COVID relief plans or something like that for, for organizations like this that, that truly do solve a need in the community. I, you know, I, I sympathize with the people that, that, that are in this because they do need, you know, if they don't have family close or anything, I really believe, you know, they need community involvement. So maybe by getting this out there, that there will be some people out there, some, maybe some businesses or somebody that, out there that, you know, sees the value of, of supporting the senior citizens of the community, and maybe we can work forward and make something happen, so.
Like you guys, the board and the director have taken a lot of phone calls as well. I've even had some previous board members and directors reach out to me. The decreasing attendance and the budgetary concerns have been happening for six to eight-plus years. So this isn't anything new. This is also not a Spencer problem either. Lots of communities unfortunately have lost their senior centers, both in Northwest Iowa, throughout the state, and even around the country. People in their 60s and 70s now don't consider themselves old. Be there before myself before long. But, you know, we don't, they don't consider themselves old. You know, my dad called me a couple of weeks ago and said he shot an 81 on the golf course. He's 70, 80s in Mesa, Arizona. Plays pickleball and everything. And so lifestyles have changed and senior centers have not done a really very good job, frankly, of keeping up with those lifestyles, and this is a result that we're seeing. So if a solution can be found, know that we will entertain anything and everything. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott, and thank you to the other speakers as well. And I, I want to reiterate that, that there is time to find a solution here. And if it's workable, I think the board will entertain those kinds of solutions and any kind of outreach to them of a positive nature. So thank you all for your concern and your, your work with the Senior Activities Center. Really appreciate it. Okay. Any other members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak? Okay? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Tracy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lauren. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, he was in spirit. He was still there.